Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the City of Madeira Beach Board of Commissioners Meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 8th, and the time is 8:00 PM. Commissioner Lister, will you please lead us in this evening's invocation?
I will, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Our most gracious heavenly Father, send down your blessings on this meeting of the City Commission and upon the individual members who comprise it. Give this commission members a clear sense of duty and lead them to a faithful discharge of the same. Direct them in their deliberations of this meeting so that all things may be done to your glory and to the welfare of the people of Madeira Beach. Always in your name we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We know what time it is.
But the city clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Lister?
Here.
Commissioner Poe?
Here.
Commissioner Schatz?
Here.
Mayor Palladino?
Here.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the provided minutes.
I shall move.
Second.
Um, motions have been made in seconds. Any discussion? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Before I ask for an approval of the agenda, I would like the commission to make one change, if we could, and that would be on consent agenda. Item four, to excuse Commissioner Poe from June 10th, when she was with her husband. Okay? And now, at this time, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, the motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? Would the city clerk, please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Uh, next presentations, um, at this time, um, I'm gonna ask the commission to please join me at the podium. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, this evening, I have the honor of presenting an award to a fantastic resident, um, that's this year, this, uh, this evening, that we're honoring as our Volunteer of the Year. And along with this, I'd like to also thank Commissioner Elaine Poe, because it's been over a year, actually, two years now, when Commissioner Poe actually started the volunteer organization. Okay, year and seven months, I'm pretty close. Okay. It was close. But, uh, when Commissioner Poe decided to run for office, uh, she looked around to who to take over the program for, and there was one man that stood out, and his name was Jim Black. So at this time, Jim, would you please join us at the podium? I'll talk loud enough, y'all can hear me, y'all know me. Mr. Black, it is my honor as the mayor of the City of Madeira Beach and commissioners of Madeira Beach to honor you as this year's Volunteer of the Year. And Jim, you do a great job. The, uh, what, two weeks ago, we did the oats planting, yeah, sea oats planting. You did a great job. You got a bunch of people out there to work, I think it was over thirty people out there. We did three thousand sea oats in one hour and thirty minutes. And I'm gonna tell you what, if you think this guy can walk fast, you should see him plant sea oats. He really, I've worked with him, I was on the ground. And then this past weekend, uh, working with everybody, gathering volunteers for the beach cleanup for Fourth of July. Jim, thank you. You're a fantastic resident, man. And you know what? Thank you, sir. Jim, would you like to say anything?
I'd like to say that, you know, there are so many good things going on in Madeira Beach, it's a great place to be. We have great leadership here, with a good vision, and I'm proud to be able to do something for our city. I'm even prouder of the volunteer team we have. We have a fantastic volunteer group. We come to our lobby, we meet our volunteers, and they're feeling with us tonight. It's just so good to be here and be a part of this. Thank the city for logging into the chat, and thank the lady for drafting.
Jim, thank you, sir. That's a lot of work. And actually, Jim, you had no choice. And before we move on, I know there's some other volunteers here this evening, and if you would please stand at this time and be recognized. Ladies, thank you very much, 'cause I'll tell you what, no matter what kind of day I have, when I walk through the door through City Hall, if it's good or bad, walking through that door and seeing y'all, the smiles on your faces, it's outstanding. And, you know, I've heard from the residents, y'all are doing a great job. And Jim, once again, you're the man, brother. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Remember, ladies, I get him first if Maggie leaves him.
Ah, don't worry about it, Tom. I got a spare room over at the house. All right, next, uh, public comment. This section is reserved for public comments on matters or concern pertaining to city business, and/or which are not on the agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Would anybody like to speak this evening? Maureen?
Uh, yes, my name is Maureen Ahearn, and I am here tonight, uh, just to introduce myself to the commission, I know some of you already, and to the folks in the audience, and to any of those watching at home. I am running for the Pinellas County School Board, District Six, which does include the town of Madeira Beach. I have been living in this community for many, many years, grew up here, went to high school here, went to USF, worked as a journalist, Beacon Leader B, moved over to the Saint Petersburg Times, actually sat here in these same chairs covering, uh, city commission meetings, um, quite a while back. Um, I'm married to State Representative Larry Ahearn, which many of you know him. We have three grown daughters, all of them living here in Saint Petersburg. Um, and I guess the reason why I'm running is I believe the school board, uh, is doing a lot of good things. We have a lot of good programs, a lot of good, um, um, schools, but then we do have some serious issues facing our school district, and I think most of us know what they are. The falling FCAT scores, discipline problems, um, attendance problems, on and on and on. So I hope that the voters choose me to, to fill that seat and to be on the school board. Um, the election is in August. It's a primary election, so it's decided in August. And I, again, I will be here for the duration of the meeting. If anybody wants to speak to me after the meeting, I'd be more than happy to do that. And, um, thank you all for giving me this opportunity, and thank you for the wonderful things that you are doing here in Madeira Beach. I'm really, really impressed with the progress and the vision that you as a commission have and that you as a mayor have. Um, so thank you for making our beach communities even better. And thank you, Jim, for what you do, because really, it is the volunteers that truly make a community. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Ahearn. Would anybody else like to speak this evening? Nope, moving on. Next, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I shall move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
Mr. Mayor, if I can have the floor, you can certainly vote on this as a, uh, one vote for, for all of them, but I know, uh, in particular, one of them, uh, we have some people in the audience that may want to comment, and so I'm wondering if you wanna just itemize them very quickly, one by one, uh, so we know what we're talking about, and then you can, uh, ask if there's any further comment in the, uh, in the audience?
I was gonna go ahead and open up the floor for if there was any comment on the consent agenda, so we'll roll the same way. Comment on all four items of the consent agenda.
Before we open it up to the audience, or for what I, the firefighters wanted to speak to the issue, and I, I would ask that the vote be taken prior to their, them speaking.
Okay. Uh, besides the firefighters, would anybody else like to speak on the consent agenda or make comment? No? Commissioners, is there any questions or comments y'all would like to make on this? And, uh, number one, I'd like to make a comment on, uh, the item four that we went ahead and, uh, put in there, and, uh, Commissioner Poe, excusing you, will definitely be a pleasure to vote for yes, because I know what it's like to have a, my loved one down, so God bless you. And, Tom, you're, believe it or not, you're a very lucky man, because I think she's a hell of a lady.
Honey, we'll talk later.
Stop digging.
Yeah.
Right. Move on.
And to the Madeira Beach firefighters, guys, uh, it's been a privilege being the mayor of the city of the finest fire department in Pinellas County. You know, uh, y'all guys, above the rest, y'all are the best. I mean, I've seen it, I know a bunch of firefighters, I know different people out there from around the county, other counties, and guys, I'll tell you what, you're number one. So thank you for what you do for the city. And with that, um, city clerk?
Just maybe for the benefit of the audience, since we, we do have a, a bigger audience than normal tonight, and if anybody's just following along at home or, or on the agenda here with us, the first is an authorization for budgeted expenditures for the Marina Dock improvements. That's very simple, you had all approved a, a very macro-type concept, but we had, went ahead and got a couple of lifts, uh, in, um, already, but we never got the formal approval. So what we'd like to do, Vince and I, um, to have you approve that dollar amount, I think it's around thirty thousand dollars, it's on the dais for you tonight, you approve that, and then once, uh, Dave gets back, we'll formalize the rest of the project and move on. Uh, number two is the approval of the increase in firefighter salary. You all know from, you know, probably six months ago or even longer, uh, the, I recognized it from the city manager's spot, the chief obviously recognized it, and even the staff recognized that we had a revolving door, and we needed to solve that problem, and the reason why we had a revolving door came down to base pay. So the, uh, city commission chose to, um, instead of kicking the can down the street, so to speak, um, address the issue head-on in midstream of a contract, which isn't unheard of, but certainly is a testament to how much the, the commission values its fire department and its employees. And so we're increasing their pay, their base pay, uh, to a median-type salary tonight, and that, that's, uh, why the firefighters have joined us. And then number three is just a, uh, a, a housekeeping-type, uh, issue. We'd like to go with our janitorial contract on a month-by-month basis until we approach, uh, closing in on moving into the new buildings, and then, uh, we'll come back to you with a recommendation either to rebid the, uh, contracted cleaning company, or maybe we'll end up putting somebody on staff and, and subtracting from this or whatever, but the staff has yet to make a recommendation on that, but we've got nothing but time in regards to that one. And then the fourth one, Mr. Mayor, you just alluded to in regards to, uh, Commissioner Poe's absence.
Okay, and once again, would anybody like to speak or make comment on any of these four items under consent agenda? No? Commissioners, any comment?
I'd like to say something, that I'm, I'm happy to be proud of the commission, that it's been a hard fight, it's been a long time, a lot of years, you guys are great. We've been around for a long time, so, thank you guys, you deserve it every day.
That was very nice, Commissioner Lister, thank you. Would the city clerk, please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. And before we move on, did somebody from the Madeira Beach Fire Department like to speak? Lieutenant?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Steve Serani, lieutenant with Madeira Beach. Um, been here seven and a half years, um, really proud of my job, proud of my city, proud of my firefighters, and I'd like to take this time to thank all the commissioners for your hard work. Um, Mayor Palladino, thank you very much for what you guys do. Um, City Manager Crawford, Mr. Trask, Amy, Vince, thanks again from everybody at the Fire Department that's here, and those who couldn't make it today. Uh, we appreciate all your hard work, so, thank you very much.
Lieutenant, thank you. And once again, guys, it's, it's been neat, lieutenant, you know, getting to be the mayor while you were, you know, promoted to lieutenant, that was, so watching y'all grow is, uh, then, you know, extremely exciting. And you have two, uh, new firefighters with you here this evening, so, keep doing what y'all do, guys, and thank you very much, and thank you for being, be here in here. That means a lot. Thank you. And if you gentlemen would like to be excused, 'cause I know y'all got a lot of things going on, and I'm just gonna take a second while they're excused. Next, item H, unfinished business ordinance 2014 dash zero four, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance 2014 dash zero four, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach amending section thirty, forty, thirty-four dash four oh two of the Code of Ordinances to add additional nuisance activities and to enlarge the pattern of nuisance activity from thirty to forty-five days, providing a codification clause, providing a conflicts and severability clause, and providing an effective date. That was the first, I'm sorry, the second reading of ordinance 2014 dash zero four by title only.
Uh, before I entertain a motion, Mr. City Managers, any, uh, comment from staff?
There's no comment from staff. Uh, staff, staff recommendation is to approve.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that this commission pass ordinance 2014 dash oh four on second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion amongst the commission? Is there any further discussion? Would the city clerk, please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, new business, public hearing, Mr. City Attorney?
Um, this is a hearing to consider an alcoholic beverage use permit, fourteen point oh four, for a two COP alcoholic beverage license at, uh, twelve nine thirty-two Village Boulevard to sell beer and wine for consumption on premises, and to allow package sales in sealed containers as provided in the state's two COP regulations. Um, you have the backup information in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody have about that. This is basically, um, you know, a formality that you have to go through to do this.
Right. Was there anybody here to speak this evening on this? No? At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the license for, uh, one two nine three two Village Boulevard.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
I walk this property, it makes sense to, to do something with that property, it just, uh, it seems under the utility, to a certain extent. So it, it makes sense by, by my standards, I've sit on this dais and passed alcoholic beverage license for places I didn't think that, uh, that it should be, I really have. And, and like Tom says, it's pretty much of a formality for us, because there's only five criterias that they have to meet, and they, they get it done. So this one is, uh, is a, is a good thing.
Okay, good. Thank you, Commissioner Lister. Um, Mr. Crawford, is there any comments from staff?
Staff recommendations for approval.
Okay. Is there any further comment? Would the city clerk, please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
I abstain from voting because of the current context of interest.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, resolution 2014 dash twenty-seven, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Yes, I'd be happy to. Resolution 2014 dash twenty-seven, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, repealing resolution 2012 dash twenty-six, which formed a sister-city relationship with the island of Bimini, and providing for an effective date hereof. It was reading of resolution 2014 dash twenty-seven by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, uh, to pass resolution two zero one four dash twenty-seven.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is, uh, Mr. City Managers, is there any comment from staff?
No, I think the only comment is, you know, we tried, uh, it pains me to have to be at this level, or, or, at this, at this point in the game, um, but it certainly appeared to be one-sided, and I, the level of participation on the other end is just not there, so, uh, we'll, we'll send them this resolution and thank them for their time, and that'll be it.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Uh, commissions, are there any discussion? Commissioner, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I would just like to ask, is there any possibility of maybe there might be someone else, someone else out there that we could become sister cities with?
Yeah, I think we, we can certainly explore those things. Remember, Bimini just made so much sense because of their proximity and their, their, um, the things that we had in common with them. Um, usually, and I believe Madeira Beach has another sister city, it's Madera, Spain, or something.
Portugal.
Portugal, Portugal. So, um, and usually, it's just because of that, we have the same name, so now we're sister cities. This was a little bit more of a, uh, one that I favored, because I, I don't like the, we'll send a delegation every five years to say hi. This one had economic impact involved in it, and, um, it, it, it didn't pan out. And so I, I certainly wouldn't put this on, uh, this won't be on the top of at least my priority list, but certainly if the commission is interested in doing something with another, another group, um, we, we can certainly explore that.
All right, is there any further comment? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, resolution number 2014 dash twenty-eight, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution 2014 dash twenty-eight, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Madeira Beach, Florida endorsing the Green Light Pinellas Plan and providing for an effective date. It was reading of resolution 2014 dash twenty-eight by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number two oh one four dash twenty-eight be adopted.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
I'm excited to pass this, Mr. Mayor, because I think it saves money for individuals throughout our city and throughout Pinellas County. The thing that I'm excited about is to repeal a, uh, property tax of zero point seven five. That being said, I, that's not off the books yet, so I'm hoping that that happens soon. Uh, in, in November, was it? Was, was it promised for November? Yes, yes, it was promised for November, so I'm just gonna wait with anticipation to, to make sure that that's done, but again, I'm excited that it, uh, it's gonna save everybody money.
Thank you, Mr., uh, Commissioner Lister. Is there any further comment? Would the city clerk, please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, resolution 2014 dash twenty-nine, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution 2014 dash twenty-nine, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida amending the FY 2014 Marina Fund Budget by increasing budgeted resale revenue and expenditures as related to the ship store activity, and providing for an effective date. It was reading of resolution 2014 dash twenty-nine by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that this commission pass resolution 2014 dash twenty-nine on first reading.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Motion's been made in second. Is, uh, Mr. City Managers, any comment from staff?
Staff recommendations for approval, sir.
All right. Any mission, discussion? Any further discussion? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, resolution 2014 dash thirty, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution 2014 dash thirty, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida amending the FY 2014 General Fund Budget by increasing personnel expenditures for new recreation positions in the amount of forty-one thousand, four hundred dollars, and providing for an effective date. That was reading, well, resolution 2014 dash thirty by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, uh, to pass resolution two zero one four dash thirty.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is, Mr. City Managers, any comment from staff?
Uh, we discussed this at the, uh, workshop prior to this meeting, this is to get, uh, the new hires up and running prior to October one. Um, getting a little anxious because of the things that we had discussed at that meeting in terms of renting out space, getting fees approved, so on and so forth. Uh, so these, uh, positions will, uh, begin, uh, two weeks from yesterday, and so in two weeks, I'd like to, uh, take the opportunity to introduce you each to these, these new employees, and, uh, we'll go from there. And then, uh, their positions are already built into the city manager's budget that takes effective, uh, it has an effective date of October one. So staff recommendations for approval.
Okay. Is there any comment from the commission? Is there any further comment? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, resolution 2014 dash thirty-one, Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution 2014 dash thirty-one, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida amending the City of Madeira Beach Fees and Collections Procedure Manual, Article Five, Stormwater Utility Management, to increase the stormwater management utility fee from five dollars to ten dollars per month, providing for distribution and providing for an effective date hereof. It was reading of resolution 2014 dash thirty-one by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we pass resolution 2014 dash thirty-one.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And Mr. City Managers, any comment from staff?
Not, other than, uh, you know, we, we explored this, uh, some time ago, probably ten months ago, and that's when we learned, uh, the city attorney walked us through the process of how you can go about changing your utility fee. The gentleman, uh, that, uh, did the study is in the audience tonight, Al Carrier, he gave a relatively lengthy and in-depth, uh, presentation at our last meeting, so we all know what this, that report says, and staff recommendation obviously is to approve.
Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
No.
Is there any further discussion? Would the city clerk, please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, ordinance number 2014 dash zero five, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance 2014 dash zero five, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the Madeira Beach Comprehensive Plan, Section Three Point Two, Future Land Use Element Policy, One Point One Point Two, providing for amendment of the Resorts Facility Medium, RFM, plan category, providing for an additional land use category entitled Resort Facilities High, RFH, pursuant to the specific procedures and standards set forth herein and in the city's, uh, Code of Ordinances, providing for the amendment of the Planned Redevelopment Mixed Use, PRMU, plan category, to accommodate increased density, intensity, for temporary lodging use consistent with and corresponding to revisions and update of the Town Center Special Area Plan. And amending section three point two, Feature Land Use Element, Goal Two, Objective Two Point One Policies, Two Point One Point Two, Two Point One Point Three, and Two Point One Point Four, providing specific authorization for the use of a density/intensity averaging, the procedures and standards for which shall be as set forth in the city's Code of Ordinances, providing for reading by title only, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date hereof. That was a reading of ordinance 2014 dash zero five by title only, and it requires a public hearing.
All right. It's time I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance 2014 dash five be passed on first read.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any, uh, Mr. City Managers, is there any discussion from staff, or any comment from staff?
Staff recommendations for approval, sir.
Okay. Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
I'm excited to finally get this done. I know we've been trying to do this for a few years and I think it gives the city and the staff some flexibility to put things in the city that are good for the city and good for some, you know, someone or the developer too. So it's a win-win situation.
Commissioner Lister? Is there any further discussion? The City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, ordinance number 2014 dash, sorry, I balls, zero six. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, ordinance 2014-06, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, Subpart B, Land Development Regulations, by amending Chapter eighty-two, General Provision, Section eighty-two dash two, definitions to provide for the term "density-intensity averaging", by amending Chapter eighty-six, Administration to Establish a New Article Five entitled Density-Intensity Averaging, and setting forth the requisite procedures and standards therefore, by amending Chapter one-ten, Zoning, Article Five, Districts, Division One, Generally, Section one-ten through one-fifty-one, Establishment of Districts, Providing for the Addition of the PD Planned Development District to the List of Zoning Districts, Amending Chapter one-ten, Zoning, Article Five, Districts, Division ten, PD Plan Development, Section one-ten dash three-eight-six, Purpose, Section one-ten dash three-eight-seven, Uses permitted, and Section one-ten dash three-eight-eight, Application for PD Zoning, Providing for the Required Use of the PD District in Conjunction with the Resorts Facility High Plan Category, Providing for Temporary Lodging Use in the PD District, Providing for the Required Submission of a Development Plan in Conjunction with and simultaneous with an Application for PD District Zoning, Providing by Reading by Title Only, Providing for Severability, Providing for Repeal of Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, and Providing for an Effective Date Hereof. That was a reading of ordinance 2014-06 and it also requires a public hearing.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that this commission pass ordinance number 2014-06 on first reading.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Mr. City Managers, is there any comment from staff?
Staff recommendations for approval.
Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
You know, what I said, well, you just have to do a lot of things to make things happen.
Exactly.
This is a dominant fact, but it's a tandem into the ordinance 2014-05.
Thank you, Commissioner Lister. Is there any further comment? Would the City Clerk, please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, ordinance number 2014-07. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, ordinance 2014-07, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, Providing for Amendment of the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan, Providing for the Revision of Chapter Two, Regulatory Plan and Guidelines with Respect to Development Standards Governing the Density-Intensity Calculations for Temporary Lodging and Mixed Uses, Providing for the Revision of Chapter Three, Implementation with Respect to the Strategies to Promote Redevelopment, Providing for the Revision of Appendix B, Infrastructure Analysis to Update and Revise the Infrastructure Impacts Correspondent with Current Data and the Proposed Revisions to Chapters Two and Three referenced above. Providing for Transmittal of the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan as amended for a Review Pursuant to the Countywide Plan and Rules, Providing for Reading by Title Only, Providing for Severability, Providing for Repeal of Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, and Providing for an Effective Date Hereof. That was the first reading of ordinance 2014-07 by title only and it also requires a public hearing.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move ordinance number 2014-27 be passed on first read.
I have second.
Motion's been made in second. Mr. City Managers, is there any comments from staff?
Recommendations for approval.
Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
You should put that on like a recording. I'm just gonna say that I'm excited. You know, this is the strategies to promote redevelopment and also the Madeira Beach Town Center, which is, you know, the north side of Madeira Beach. So it's nice that the north and the south are getting together and we're making a nice city on both ends. We're booking, you know, a wonderful city, a wonderful place to live. And this just makes it easier for it to get done. And again, I know our staff is really over, well, I shouldn't say overworked, but they work hard. They do work hard. And I think that what we just did here today is gonna make them work harder. So they may not like us that much. I think you're gonna get a lot of, a lot of people wanting to come to the City of Madeira Beach and become part of a wonderful, wonderful future.
Excellent. And I know when I was sitting on the planning commission, we went through this when Schatz was the mayor of the City of Madeira Beach. So actually, it's nice to see this getting done. It's taken a few years, Pat, but we're gonna be able to get it done and watch our city, the rebirth of our city. So it is quite exciting.
It is. It's overwhelming and it's wonderful.
Absolutely.
Wonderful that we've arrived at this particular stage of the game.
Absolutely. Is there any further comment? Would the City Clerk, please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I can have the floor. Al Carrier's in the audience. Al Carrier, along with Dave Healy, did a tremendous amount of work on this and I certainly, at least from my position, want to thank them. But I wanna thank the commission too. You're making a statement tonight. You are now a very, very progressive city without writing a blank check to the developers. And that's all intertwined in this legislation. You're saying on a case-by-case basis, we'll look at the development you wanna bring to our city and we'll let you know if you fit. And if you fit, we'll figure out a way to make it happen. And so that's a big change and you're progressive and you're not willing to just watch, let time pass us by. And so congratulations to you. But again, huge thank you to Dave Healy. Lord knows, he's been more than patient with us. It's been four or five years probably since we started this and then Al Carrier as well. They've been fantastic guys to work with, so I really appreciate them.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
I think we ought to give a good thanks to our city manager also.
And our city staff, Lynn.
Yes.
I worked on this with the planning board. It's a job. These sorts of things are such jobs and, you know what, they're just, they're really boring. But they're doing, they're just boring, but you gotta, it's something you gotta do.
Commissioner Schatz?
It's something you gotta do.
Commissioner Schatz, you're absolutely right because we got, we got an excellent planning commission. And I know that the city manager, after having the chance to talk to him after the meeting when they got to discuss this, I think they were pretty excited too. So having their full recommendation, they're going through the commission, the staff's recommendation, you know, Dave Healy having a chance to talk to him, Mr. Carrier having a chance to talk to him. So it's gonna make some properties move that have been sitting for over ten to fifteen years in this city. It's just gonna, that's the entrance to our city. So it's very exciting. It's very exciting. So thank you to everyone, commission, staff, and the planning commission.
He just made his reading.
Exactly. With that, next reports and correspondence. And first of all, I would like to thank, Pat, like to thank you for covering me for the mayor's meeting last Wednesday. And is there anything to bring from the mayor's council? I know that Congressman Jolly was the speaker.
Speaker, it was very outstanding. Very nice. We're going back to your job on the...
Emergency medical?
That's it. I didn't say it.
I was counting med, EMS, right.
EMS, boy. And it was just a nice meeting. We met at the L. R. Country Club. It was wonderful, much closer than when we went way out on all merchandise. I don't know who did that, Travis, but it was a great idea.
Yeah, you kinda made it a little more central for the mayor's.
It's our turn at last to be at this end of town.
And Pat, once again, thank you. And it's, you know, it's kinda neat. I think it shows the rest of the county, when you go there, that two past mayors working together for a city's goal is outstanding. So thank you. Any other commissioners have anything to report?
I just wanted to say another thing. You know, we had, this weekend, we had a wonderful, a wonderful, wonderful weekend here in Madeira Beach. Congratulations to our staff and the hard work that was done to put on an outstanding fireworks show in this community. I've had many, many, many compliments. I'm sure the rest of the commissioners have. It was wonderful. Following that, on Saturday and Sunday, we had an outstanding arts and craft show on Madeira Way, which is the American Crafters, which comes from the other coast and travel all over the country. So it was a very first-class show. They were so happy to be here and they love coming to Madeira Beach. So they will be back again in November. If you didn't get a chance, you can come up in November and take a stroll around. But it was wonderful. Thanks to our city manager, to our staff, everybody worked hard to put on a wonderful, wonderful week.
And the weather cooperated.
I know. It's a beautiful thing.
For everything.
We got close at once, but it did do it. Threatened us really bad.
There you go. Mr. City Attorney?
I just wanted to bring your attention to a couple of things. I'm sure you've probably seen that we have sent the cease and desist letters to those people that are advertising rentals, short-term rentals within the city. We've, I'll let you know if and when we get any response to those, but we sent you copies of those so that you could see them. I also wanted to let you know that there are two cases that are currently being considered for prosecution before the special magistrate in the meeting in August. Of course, all the proper notices and so forth will have to be sent, but we are working towards that at this point. So just wanted to give you that little update.
Tom, let me ask you a quick question. Department of Professional Regulations, how do we get them to stop giving license for short-term rentals?
I don't think that you will be able to do that. And the reason I say that is they're governed by different regulations and I don't believe any one of them provides that before they issue any licenses, they make sure that the applicant has complied with every other provision. They may say something to that, but I don't think that they ever enforce it. So I think it's gonna be very difficult to do that.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief. Just a quick reminder that you have a budget meeting July sixteenth, I believe that's next Wednesday? If I'm right?
Yes.
At six PM. We'll have that noticed and out in the public as quickly as possible. Water testing, this, Commissioner Poe and I have been working on this and I think we're gonna see this escalate again in the near future. But the water testing that you approved is expiring in terms of cash, money in their contract. So Steve Tartt and CPWG will be doing the less, the last of their water testing this week. If what Commissioner Poe and I and a couple of other employees are working on proves that we need to have additional funding, obviously, you'll probably see a budget amendment sponsored by Commissioner Poe in front of you in the near future that we continue to do that, that testing. And then the Fourth of July, it was a success. I'm sitting here with a smile on my face instead of crying this year because, I mean, it happened. I mean, the weather was fantastic, the show was great. What we did out on the beach at Archbald, and there wasn't, I haven't received one complaint yet. So I think, you know, next year, we'll shoot them off right where we did this year. We'll have a big party on our event field and that's probably gonna be the home of the fireworks in Madeira Beach from now on. I think that the idea of getting them out on the Gulf is just not attainable. So we'll end up doing that. Big thanks goes out, there's a couple of people that made that possible. You know, Dave Marcinno makes the Fourth of July happen around here. He really does. And he's not here tonight and he deserves a pat on the back. And then Officers Luckett and Lawson. I mean, if you're trying to get out of here after the fireworks, that was the smoothest I've been able to get out since I've been here in my three years. And so they did a great job with the traffic congestion. Commissioner Schatz brings up a good point though, and we did this last year. And I've talked to each individually and I've kinda made my decision is that almost all the employees work on the Fourth, especially the department heads. I think every department head probably had some time in and it's a long day. A lot of the employees work the next day. We're out there getting volunteers together to clean up the beach. The sanitation guys are there, so on and so forth. It's a song you've heard me sing before.